Welcome everyone. Okay, we'll start the meeting tonight with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the people of this land, in all its parts, one nation, united, indivisible, with the great justice of our own.
All right, let's call it night. We have board members Mark Donovan, Susan Barret, Danielle Klein, Martha Majeski, Bob Cooney. I have also Lori Getz, Bill Brennan, Paul Bettenger, and Lisa Stevens, present, Tina Stevens, sorry, Tina. And we did have an executive session prior to this meeting, it was called prior to March 21st, again, to discuss potential property acquisition and potential litigation. Consider agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the board supervisors' March 8th, 2023 business meetings. The department committee, commission, and council reports as posted, received by the board supervisors over the month, for the month of March 2023. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurers' report and payment of bills, Lori. Oh, I'm sorry, consideration of acceptance of treasurer's report from the hearing of March 31st, 2023, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, Lori.
All right, so treasurer's report, for month end, March 31st, we have a general fund balance of just over $40,000. It's up about $250,000 over the last month. Year-to-date, we're at about 18% of expenses and .5% of revenues. We're doing really well still with our, with our interest income, so hopefully good investments are going really well.
Excellent. Any comments from the public? All right, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of disbursements dated April 12th, 2023, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, Lori, that's good, all right, any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board discussion items, the first item on the list is subdivision and land development, zoning hearing board application, 40 Creek Road, applicant is seeking a variance to construct a single-family home.
So this application is before the board, they actually, it's a little bit of an unconventional situation, they already went to the hearing, but the record has remained open for the board to decide if you would like to oppose the application or remain neutral, so that is the decision that is before the board this evening. It's a small lot size, so that is what they are seeking relief from.
Does anybody here from, hi?
Dave, I'm Mark Jovis, I'm here from the app. This is an undersized lot, dates back to at least 1960, used to be combined by AT&amp;T as a road building there, proposed as for a regional-sized, single-family attached dwelling, but the lot is so undersized, it requires a number of conventional variances, a single-family home is a permitted use, so should be, much ado about nothing, we hope, every landowner has a right to use his property, this man, this is a request in a reasonable use of the land, with a number of corporates as your solicitor will confirm undersized lots, and an owner of undersized lots has a right to a reasonable use of the land, so that's what the application's about. The plan shows a 20 by 30 foot footprint for a house, testimony was for a small Cape Cod house, two-story house, that's the substance of the application.
So it is a 20 by 30 footprint?
Footprint. We spent a lot of time investigating the property, to take a look at easements, to get set the test, and there were some tests under that, to make sure that we answered all the questions that the summer officer, this was filed back in September, the applicant filed on his own, then we required him to stay in his own, and he bought the property, claims he was told he could use it for storage sheds, he has like a pop-up business in Philadelphia here, we learned that residential zoning doesn't allow storage sheds, so we filed and entered the application for a single-family home.
The plan shows a 20 by 40, you said 20 by 30, which is it?
I thought it was by 20, I don't have the plan.
Plan says 20 by 40.
You have the plan printed out?
It says 30 by 40.
Sorry, 30 by 40.
Sorry, sorry, my numbers are wrong.
And can you tell the board why you refuse to extend the hearing date to next month, so that this board could have looked at this application before requiring a hearing? Can you explain that?
Well, it seems like a very simple straightforward application, and as you know, I have a conflict on May 8th, because that's one reason why I couldn't hear on May 8th. We thought it was a reasonable compromise to start the, start the hearing, keep the record open, give the board a chance considering now.
So it's 20 by 30 is a lot different than, what'd you say, 30 by 40?
The plan shows 30 by 40. The question, among the questions here is whether this is a reasonable use of the property. We talked about small lots, you understand where we are.
Phil suggested go to hearing, maybe we should build a tiny house, 15 by 15.
I did not suggest that, Mr. Jones, I said that was one of the, is a question.
Any other comments, questions? Public comment? Want to step up and give us your name?
Name and address, please, thanks.
Hi there, Sue Aronchil, ARB, and S D H I E L D, 130 Valley Park Road. He neglected to mention that the lot size is, I believe, 17,000 square feet gross, and two and a half acres over, so it's really tiny, it might be a lawful use for an AT&amp;T Little Brick Building, but it's not even a lawful use for one horse or a few dogs.
So that's, would that be less than a half acre?
A quarter acre.
Okay.
I mean, the acre is 43,000 square feet.
And the zoning in that area is, what, two?
At least two, two and a half acres.
The zoning is two and a half acres, this is .37 of an acre, it's about a third of an acre.
So.
Thanks, Sue. Anybody else? Move on?
You're welcome.
All right, next item on the agenda, zoning hearing board application, 5 Campbell Lane, applicant is seeking variances for conservation of aggregate care use to multifamily, seven units, minimum to lot, minimum lot size and minimum unit size.
I think we have electronic too, maybe?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, this is David Rappo, Thomas McCabe, I have represented the other property owner on the other side with a very similar advance. This is again, an assisted living facility with 5 Campbell Lane, the owners are here, present, Jeff Rock, Maryhill LLC, this was, this is a living facility with seven units, they're looking to convert it into, where's that? The slight difference net between this and the other properties that we had requested relief from is one, the lot size of this is just shy to make it .95 acres, because it's two lots that are, that are one parcel, tax is one parcel by Chester County, and are treated as one parcel, they just are described as two lots with a deal, which is how we have it in our application, but it is already one parcel, it's only for consolidating, it's already, yeah. The other thing is that there's already ample parking spaces, under the zoning code, there would not be any request for any type of parking relief, there are already 15 available parking spots that are already present on the properties themselves. So the relief that's going to be seeking requested is obviously use relief, we're going from assisted living facility with seven units to a proposed residential facility with seven residential units, so changing the use, and then of those units, four are below the 800 square foot requirement of the zoning code, which I believe is the third, fourth page of the package that I just handed out, showing the levels one and level two. The other request is similar to what was asked on the other property, under the zoning code, this has a public sewer, well of water, for, in the R2 district, you'd be looking at a request of 210,000, I believe, square feet, if my math is correct, for a 41,000 and change square foot one. Again, this is almost, the other lot by comparison that I have represented, that is 17,500 square feet, we're dealing with more than twice that amount as far as lot size is concerned. And that had only seven parking spots, just by comparison within the, certainly welcome any comments from the board, questions, concerns, I'm here, the owners are here, so we have the architect here, I'm certainly here.
So you're saying that four of the units will exceed 800 feet and four would be under?
Three will exceed 800, four will be below.
How does that compare to the previous, previous application with the other property just by comparison?
Sure, the other property, we wound up shrinking it down to four units, one of the original proposed units was going to be in like a second accessory building, which was appropriately objected to by the board, who is left as a accessory building, so with that, I believe, all of those units in that, if they were combined into four, were combined with, with the square foot, it was at that point, probably, it might have been three out of four.
Yeah, the, the, the unit at 388 square feet, that's less than half of the 800, it kind of throws me a bit, I'm a little hesitant, hesitant to be on board with a 388 square foot unit.
Understood, and all of what?
Just by way of example, because?
That's this one down here, isn't it?
Yeah, and, 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 right, yeah, and right next to you, you have a 555, you combine those two, you're over 800, I mean, so, so, I mean, I'm appreciating the fact that you want to get the best and highest use out of the property, there's, there's, there's reasonable sizes and there, there might be a little contention there.
Understood, at least the thought, I understand just the thought process behind it, if you look at the plan, both of those have handicap accessible bathrooms, which is, you know, a novelty, so to speak, which is why the thought was to keep those separated, and the fact that they have been separated for the assisted living facility, but I absolutely take the board's consideration, if that was, that, to bring that back to the architect potential, combine those into one unit, two-bedroom, one unit, that would certainly be over, as you said, the 800 square foot, that would, if that were done, that would bring the, or the units that were below 800 square feet down to, one of them being 719 square feet on the second floor, and the other one right next to that, that's?
530.
530 square feet, so it would take, it would take the unit variance request from four units down to two at that point, with one of them being just shy of the 800 and 719 square feet.
How's your parking on this, too?
There are 15 parking spots, if you, already exist, and that, and that, so there would not even need to be a variance request for parking, because under the zoning code, you need two parking spots per unit, so even at the, if the board, and I understand the board's concerns, but for hypothetical argument, say, if you were to accept all seven units, we're already there within extra space, if the units were reduced, we'd be even more than ample parking, again, already in existence.
What do you know about Campbell Lane, and who owns it, and who maintains it?
As we're talking about 5 Campbell Lane right now.
No, the street itself.
The street itself, that was your question, I don't know who owns the street itself.
Well, there's some controversy about who owns Campbell Lane, the district, or, or whether it's private or public, or?
The plaza.
Pardon?
The plaza.
It was a private room when the candles come off course, and then when it went to the school district, I don't know if the school district took the lane, but the township does no means or.
We don't own it?
No.
Okay, so we don't own it?
Well, it says it's owned by somebody, right?
Somebody must own it, take a look into that, because someone may show up at your door and say you can't use this road in the future.
So would you be open to revising the plan to have those two apartments consolidated?
Yes.
That's upstairs and downstairs?
Well, downstairs, it's already 990 square, it's just the upstairs, well, no, I'm sorry, maybe I'm looking reverse, upstairs, the downstairs one is, is where the?
It's correct.
Downstairs one is already 990, so it's just these two here.
Yeah, I think that would alleviate my concerns.
And on the upstairs, it would be the 719 and 530, which again are what, closer to the 800, which would be the difference. If I may have one moment to just step back to my client's side, so that we're, you're efficient.
It's like an efficiency, size efficiency, that'd be a nice, nice building, efficiency, that it's a senior, who's on fixing company.
Or somebody who's like a low come, simply, you weren't there in the work, in the apartment, and then.
Technically, no, but that would not be building, there's like minimum, minimum size for living space, if you're in a room, obviously, things, you'd have to have a certain amount of space for like, if you're a family, you have enough living space to negotiate, it's like a negotiation.
Right, yep.
Just to make sure.
We're taking no action.
There are fringe cases, but typically, they tend to help themselves by the number of cars, we could suggest maybe like a limit, like take some in or a car or something.
Yes, that would be perfectly acceptable, to combine on level one, 555 and 388.
You might see a family of four trying to move in to like two bedrooms.
Give that more than eight square feet. Parents' rooms, that would be the township's concern.
Right, I think, as I understand it, that the township doesn't vote, but it takes no action, so, they will not appear, I will not appear to you here.
Okay, so, neutral.
Well, you can call it that, we're just taking no action.
Well, take no action.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions or concerns, or?
I do have, I have a question, actually, is anybody living in this residence currently?
I believe we have the maintenance, maintenance guy who works for our company, he's in and out.
Jeffrey D. Antonio.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
I apologize, because they have a big, I'm staying awake. Jeffrey D. Antonio, one of the owners of Maryhill Road LLC, yes, I have Matt Ryan, who works for our company, and he is, he's living in another property in Charleston, he does have some of his personal belongings in the property.
Okay.
He's in and out, he's doing maintenance work.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? All right, moving on.
Thank you, may we be excused?
Yes, thank you.
How many, everyone?
All right, moving on, zoning hearing board application, 116 Burn Drive, applicant is seeking variances for side yard setbacks and accessory structure size. Do we have anyone here that wants to speak on that?
It does not, it does not look like we have an applicant here, so this applicant is seeking relief, they are constructing, reconstructing a two-car garage, and they need relief from the setback requirement, not by very much.
We usually don't fund that. So, I'm fine.
Do we have any feedback from any neighbors opposing it?
We would not, we would not yet, until the hearing.
Okay, so in this case, again, take no action, let the zoning hearing board hear that.
Then do their thing.
Okay, all right, moving on, old business, update on Paul Lehman Drive project. Paul?
Paul's going to take this.
All right, thank you, and Paul Lehman's actually on two different times, so I'll, I'll stay in my lane for this one. So the update was on February 28th, we had a site meeting with representatives from Dolee, as well as Nick, township roadmaster, and T and M engineer, and we were reviewing the existing condition of Paul Lehman in preparation for the final paving. In doing so, there was discussions on the project itself, and some of the thoughts were that when they had done some of their excavation and coring of the road, they realized that the pavement thickness for Paul Lehman was very thin, and that being the case, there were extensive areas where we were proposing to mill and to overlay, so mill means you scrape off that, that, the top layer for, for an inch or so, and there was a concern that doing, using that machinery would break up the pavement. Another concern was, is that the, the road design itself having thin pavement, for wherever we had proposed trench design, we had told them to put in a full base course, a binder course, and, and wearing course. Once they did the pavement course, you realize there's absolutely no binder course. So just an explanation of the road, the base course is the foundation, if you're thinking about like a, like a carpet and a slab type of situation, that would be the concrete, the, the padding for your carpet would be the binder, it's the shock absorber, the bigger the pay, the bigger the binder, the softer it is for the cars, et cetera, and then there's the wearing course, which would be the carpet, which is the nice layer course, it's stronger, has less like dense aggregate for driving, so that if it chips up. What Dolee had proposed doing is that, hey, why don't we eliminate the milling, because it's only going to damage the road, let's get rid of the binder, because there's no need to just have little patches of binder where the trench work was done, and instead, allocate those monies to the best possible way to put additional wearing course on the road. So the, the gist of what's going on here is that essentially, and there was a memo that we had prepared, it's dated April 7th, both the roadmaster and Lori were on vacation when this was done, and we, and we prepared this in coordination with Dolee. The paving, the wearing course would, would, would start at about Station 025, which is about the intersection of Oakwood Lane, and there would be brand-new wearing course all the way up to the proposed manhole, it's almost 1,600 feet, all the way up, so the road wouldn't have any patchwork, it would have a nice wearing course, and that is due to the removal of the, the cost with the milling, as well as the removal for the binder course. Dolee hasn't given the approximate change, because it's not an even exchange, but it looks like it's going to be about a total of $10,000 more, and in our memo, we recommend that, and, and again, I was, I wanted to have a con, further conversations with Lori and Nick about this, because I felt like it was a good change in how the road was going to be presented ultimately at the end, there's no reason to put the binder, you know, once they did the core samples, there's, there's no binder there, and if you're going to mill the road, you're just going to crack up what's quote-unquote "the base course," which is thin as is, so the recommendation that we were going to talk with Nick and Lori about was, let's, let's move ahead with this, we don't have an official change order from them yet, but the thought is, is that it's going to be about approximately $10,000, and it should also be noted to the board that during construction, there was, there was minimal rock encountered, and we had, in the original estimate, we had proposed, it was like $135 per cubic yard, which totaled almost $100,000. So with the, the minimal rock that was hit, there will be a change order that will be submitted also to the township in the negative for us, so there'll be less money, so I did just want to offer that out there for discussion, so.
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear what you and Nick have to say, once you read everything.
We walked a road, we bought, and we're fine with everything they want to do, we've done that process before.
Oh, okay.
They're aquing the water lines, reducing the trenching, and getting the whole road ready, I think that's a better product when you do that, and plus, they ever want to put the asphalt berms where they weren't.
Yeah.
When they paid, so, I think it's a good one for us.
Yeah, there, there was some damage to some of the existing rolled asphalt curbing, and Dolee has actually purchased equipment, because they like, they like what Nick has done in the township, so that they can offer this to other townships in certain areas, so they actually purchased an apparatus out of their own capital, and they're very excited to use it.
So in this case, we don't take any action, is that we have a quote for a change order? Is that where we are?
Yeah, there's nothing to.
Yeah, there's, this is just an update, you know, Dolee is, you know, they're, they're looking to start paving, they had originally thought about in the beginning of April, and then as we were discussing this potential change, I said, well, we don't want, I certainly didn't want to move ahead without discussing it in further with Lori and Nick, and then the board to have a review.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Thanks, Paul.
Sure.
Okay. New business, motion to approve Charles Aqualani, Aqualina, I'm sorry, as alternate member of the environmental advisory council with a term expiring December 1st, 2024, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Comments, questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, thank you for your service, Charles. Authorized advertisement to bid 2023 Batumina Seal Coat Road Project, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, any questions, and do we want to get up?
So this is our 2023, Batumina Seal Coat is fancy terminology for oil and chip, so we have to go up to bid for that. Nick, which, what road, we're doing Cloier?
We're actually going to break it up, and, and, because we don't know what the prices are going to come in.
Right.
So we've got Cloier Springs, number one, Diamond Rock, number two, and Ashford, number three, we're going to bid separately, so the prices come in real high, we can knock them off, but we have it prioritized, you know, if they come in too high, you can throw the bid down.
Yep.
We haven't done it, we did this 2017.
Yeah, if you recall, we, we didn't do it last year because the prices were too high.
Yeah, I do remember that. Do you think the prices have come down?
He said they, when I talked to the general whip, he said they kind of stabilized, it all depends how.
Stabilized high or stabilized low?
It's based on the asphalt index.
Okay, okay.
So it is, but it is, we can't put it off any longer at this point.
No.
I, I don't think we put escalator, Paul, maybe we, we could check.
I think we did.
We did?
Oh, yeah. So this is just to authorize the bid.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discussion on 2023 Road Department curb replacement and repair project. Lori?
Okay, this is another project that?
Nick, um, can you come up to the microphone?
Sorry, I don't think we can get you on the camera, or we can, you can take it here.
We can bring the mic to you if you want.
Bring that, right? You got it.
It's terrible.
So this, this has been budgeted, it was approved 100,000, and you know we've done a lot of work in that retreat, we switched to roster, sort of 4,000 feet is on the go roster, if you guys approve, and it's 23 and 24 roster avenue.
Is this part of that eight-year, 10-year project?
Well, it was a five-year, but now it's stretching, so we're doing, I think it's a good deal to do, do whatever you're getting there.
Yeah.
Is that, is that anywhere near the sidewalk project?
No.
No, it's pretty far away from that.
Yeah, it's up the road.
It's farther back.
It's down to the middle, so, we did one side last year, now the neighbors were complaining, and that's a couple things, because the one curb's nice and the other curb's?
It doesn't match, so we're, we're going to match it.
You know, you've got a lot out in there, so.
You did the same thing in our neighborhood, and I, they came to me and complained, and I said, we only had so much money in the budget this year, they'll come back next year, they haven't forgotten you.
Yep.
So it's an ongoing process, if you guys want to do it, I think it's a good deal, we have the greatest taxes to do it, so, did the one fall today, so we're ready to go.
Okay.
Great.
So I, I actually, why, why?
If they have a complaint, see Martha.
So I actually?
If they have a complaint, see Martha.
So I actually have, and I'm not really, I'm not really quite sure who to ask this question to, like, you were just talking about the, um, the?
The road asphalt?
The asphalt curbs, which is better?
Concrete curb is better, but when you're, when you're paving, and you're putting berms in by asphalt, we actually came up with our old contract, a way to modify the door, where you make the berm when you're paving, so it doesn't get knocked off in the snowbank. So if you look at Oakwood Lane, it's another spot, and the contractor's going to modify the pavement, try to do that quality, so usually when you put asphalt down, put the road down, and then you actually put asphalt on top of it, this is done while it's paving, so it's needed and it's very hard to knock off.
So, in the future, you would still consider this an asphalt berm, you wouldn't consider putting in?
No, we would, we would still remove and replace concrete, you can't do it on, on a road that has a curb, you have to do. You, you can't do it on, on a road that has curb. You have to do it on roads that are flat and no curves.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I.
Oh, is that, okay. I didn't realize that, okay. I didn't know that. I just learned something.
You, you can't take the rolled cur, your curb out and then do it with asphalt. You have to do it with the fat of the body.
Okay, I didn't.
Well, what about, this may sound like a silly question, but I know some of the newer developments, when they're built, they have the granite curbs and do those really have a significant life to them?
They, they hold up if they're put in right.
Okay.
Um, a lot of it, we saw on the big medews where the chairs weren't did, done right.
Right.
And they, they sank.
Yeah, you get the, the jagged teeth type of, type of situation.
So if, if there's a, if it's thin concrete, it'll sink at the joints.
Correct.
But if it's done right, all the concrete, I think that's another subdivision point.
It is. Yes, yes.
It has to be granite or rolled through?
Uh, uh, granite. It's granite, it's granite.
My, my assumption is that at some point we'll have to be replacing those for, like the township would replace them if they were to break, right?
Granite will last a long time.
That's, that's my question. Like it does make sense to put them in granite because of the, again, if they're done right.
If it's an existing rate, like i- i- if it's an existing road, the challenge would be when, when they, when they would box out a road, they would pour, they would pour the, the concrete base.
Footers.
And, yeah, and then they would put the, the, the teeth in, like the Belgian block is, is another technical term. Then you put the subbase in the road. So i- it's all kind of like one big sandwich, it's a little bit more firm. The challenge is if, if you're trying to like, let's say retrofit granite into a situation, you lose a lot of that stability. What Nick's talking about, like a snowplow ding in it, i- it will have a lot more damage to it if, if it was built, uh, after the fact.
So granite needs to be replaced with granite, uh, cement needs to be replaced with cement and then if you don't have a cement curb, you can do the rolled asphalt.
Correct, correct. So that's, yeah, that's what we're asking. That's good.
All right.
And then we'll be talking about the paving programs. This is just the curbing. The paving program we're going to discuss, that's a topic for the, uh, for the workshop this month.
And the drainage project.
And the, yes.
Thanks. Good job.
So just to let you guys know, everyone in our neighborhood is really pleased with the curbing job that you did because.
Because you're not paying for it. You probably have to pay for it, I think.
Yes, that's true.
Really?
Yeah. And sidewalks too.
Yep.
All right, next under new business, authorize the exoneration of uncollectible real estate property tax liens in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents per the request from Chester County Tax Claim Bureau. Lori, can you give us a little bit of that, is that?
Yep, so this is something that comes, it's a request that comes in every year from the county. They go through their list of, uh, real estate taxes, outstanding ones, and identify any that are uncollectible. These happen to be all, um, mobile homes that have been removed from their loss.
For the past, as long as I've been on the board, um, this is all we ever get are the ones from the mobile homes and that's why they're so small.
All right, I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of approval of Encore Property Services quote in the amount of ten thousand dollars for exterior painting of the old township building. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
How many square feet is the building? So ten thousand dollars?
How big is your building? Do you know?
Not so much.
Yeah, well, well, it's the building where your office resides.
We're not talking about the maintenance.
It's the old, it's the old building.
The historical structure.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know the square footage offhand. This is the, it's the same, it's the same company that did this building. And they're going to do.
They're going to power wash, repair any odd wood, same.
Same thing they did here. They're going to match the existing color on the old building, though they're not going to match this building.
As far as the masonry on that building, that's all in good shape.
That was pointed at you. We had.
We just did that last year.
Fireplace done, we had it put on, so.
Yep.
We got to do the mason check the building, we did everything that's still on the road.
The last time it was painted was in two thousand twelve, eleven?
Yeah, three, yeah, um, that was gorgeous.
It was, it was like my first or second year on the board.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like a lot, but I, I think everything seems like a lot these days.
Yeah, paint's kind of, paint's kind of like asphalt where it's just going up and up and probably leveled up. It's still very expensive.
It's also an old building, so there's the possibility that they may have to do some lead remediation.
Is that built into the price?
Yeah, you said, and if there is wood damage, they'll replace it?
Okay.
That's right.
So we're not going to be paying extra for lead remediation measures or anything?
Change orders.
Change orders.
For all those things, yeah. I don't know, it sounds like it's built in.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any discussion or comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, consideration of approval of Dolly Construction Change Order Number Two in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents for the Paul Lehman Drive Project. Work includes one inlet box modification, field adjustments due to existing utility conflicts, vacuum excavations, and two three-quarter inch water service relocations of the projects, uh, to the project's scope. All right, Paul, you want to make sense of that?
Certainly. Certainly. So, um, this is, this would be change order number two for the project. The first change order was a credit to the township for seventy-five hundred dollars. So this one is actually a, a cost of seventeen thousand dollars, uh, seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirteen eighty-five. So plus or minus, it, it's a net increase so far of nine thousand for the project. What had occurred is during the, uh, construction, uh, it was noticed that there were a couple, uh, utilities that were, uh, when they were marked in the field, gas lines, et cetera, and Dolly was doing their work, uh, they were in conflict. So in doing so, they had to relocate an inlet here or there. They had to modify boxes that they had already precast by bricking them, et cetera. In addition to, uh, where you saw the vacuum excavation, when they come across a gas line that wasn't ex, where it was expected, they had to do what's called a soft dig. They had to go through, make sure everything was safe. Also, there, there were two water lines, uh, that were properly shown that had to be readjusted into the field. So the, uh, the work was, uh, Dolly had prepared a change order request to the township, complete with pictures and their scope of work and the costs. We reviewed it based off of our, uh, you know, while, while we were out in the field and, uh, it, it, it was all work that was completed to the benefit of the project based off of the conflicts.
Question, when they mark that, you have a company, you contract out to somebody to mark the lines where gas and water are, did they mismark it?
Now, you see, you see, the, the complication with that, Bob, is that, uh, you, you prepare, uh, the, the survey firm that we used, Ash, Ash Associates, uh, you contract them to do the, the survey. So they, uh, they, uh, conducted a PA one call where all the various utilities that would go out in a certain range would go and they would, uh, uh, put spray paint, uh, different colors, et cetera, trying to let you know what's underground based off of the plans and the data they have available. What likely occurred here is the age of Paul Lehman, they had the plans and they were, and they had information here and they had information here. So they struck a straight line, which would make logical sense, but it deviated in the field when it was constructed many, many years ago. So when Dolly was going through and doing their initial run-through, they're like, wait a second, this is, you know, I'm expecting it to be a couple of feet over here. It's right in the way. Let's stop. We have, we, obviously we can't do it the way we were going to. So, so, so inlets had to shift a little bit. And like I said, some of the structures that had, like, let's say, an opening on the side had to turn to the other side, so you had to brick and, 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 uh, you know, cement it up, route it, and had to cut a prefab, uh, a hole over there. So, um, all the work was needed in order to make the project work based off the conflicts that were recognized in the field.
I get Dolly's argument, but I guess where I'm going, is there anybody that did anything wrong to cause this, where they'd have some kind of coverage that we can tap into, or is this something that you see happens just from?
This is common with old, this is common in older developments.
Yeah.
Especially, there's limited information, the GPS technology wasn't the same, something like that. Or didn't exist.
I'm guessing the PA one law says that the facility has to mark to the best of their ability, but.
Correct.
They are not required to be perfect.
Correct, and they, they will, they will, at some cases, like, and now when you put in a lot of pipes and things like that, uh, you know, sanitary pipe which goes in plastic, you'll have like a magnetic strip on the top, so it's a lot easier to find pipes like that. Obviously, water is typically a little bit easier. But the problem is, is that when they're sitting there and they're looking at what the, the design plans are and they're hearing to hear, they assumed that, you know, it either followed the curve of the road, et cetera, and any slight deviation can cause a problem, which, which is what occurred in this situation.
You're okay with this as something that sometimes happens and.
Absolutely. Absolutely. This had, this happens a lot on projects unless you're doing something in a prairie build where you have a lot of open space. If you, if you have an existing roadway or things like that, even, even streets, a lot of times the contractors will like deviate, you know, maybe try to put a trench a little bit closer to, 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 you know, expedite, ex, you know, the excavations. Things dance in the field a little bit and this is probably a perfect example of that.
So when you see a change order of this size, does that number look accurate to you?
Yes.
As far as how much it would cost for them to do it?
Yes, I, I think everything that they had to do, uh, in order to make everything work as well, as well as work with us and try to problem solve it, I thought, I think that, that, that cost is very much in line.
I just wanted to confirm Paul's statement, when they did the water main replacement on the mountain seven years ago, all the utility records were a mess. We were running two to four gas leaks per week because none of the gas lines were where the plan said they were.
Okay.
And they were just trying to navigate those gas lines to replace the water. So it's, that specific area has poor record keeping on its own.
All right, I don't know that I made a motion, but I'll make a motion, uh, to accept. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Go ahead. I'll second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consideration of approval of Cook's Service Company proposal in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars for replacement of two HVAC condensing units that serviced the meeting room, which is cooking, and hallway areas. I'll make that motion.
Second, second, and second, the third and fourth.
For the first time, I'm not cold in a meeting.
I have one dissenting vote.
But I could abstain from the vote.
Discussion, I think it almost goes without saying.
I think this room speaks for itself, although Rick did point out to me that it should say heat pump units and not condensing units.
Amend the, amend that motion. Thank you.
It's, it's fine.
Great.
All right, any comments from the public? Any more comments from up here? All in favor?
Aye.
You did that on purpose, didn't you Lori? Just so that everybody could feel.
Theatrics, yes.
All right, next, consideration of approval to purchase 2023 Ford Interceptor for the police department in the amount of, uh, it looks like an uplifting cost. It doesn't have the amount of, of seventeen thousand, two hundred and eleven and sixty-six there.
So, yeah.
For the total cost of forty-four thousand, four hundred, uh, it says the non-hybrid would be forty-one thousand, six hundred.
Correct. Um, and that would, that does not include that upfitting cost. So, uh, the lieutenant can speak to this. You all received a memo from the chief outlining this. Um, this did go before the EAC. The EAC did rec, make a recommendation to the board that the police department purchased the hybrid vehicle. Um, the lieutenant is here to answer any questions, if any of you have any questions about the memo.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm pretty sure all you have a memo ran into the chief from the bar system. So we had the copy of all the receipts for the hybrid issue have seen out of town, the vehicles had, that's the issue that we had with it. So it's his view and my view that, uh, A, the non-hybrid is cheap, but that's not the biggest issue. The biggest issue is the vehicle not being available, service won't be needed. Vehicle is available to purchase off the lot, you don't have to worry about it. The upfitting really would be a whole lot different in terms of the upfitting cost between the hybrid and non-hybrid. Really the factors before you choose up for the, the decisive direction.
Is there, I mean, sometimes you get a, a car and it's a lemon, right? Is it, I mean, do you think that the, your experience with the hybrid is indicative of, in general, or?
Well, this is the first hybrid that I've been exposed to.
Yeah.
The chief, I believe, Cheltenham, they had a view and he had similar issues there with it.
Okay.
So that's all I can offer here.
Can I just give you the EAC's perspective? So they discussed this at length and things they looked at were, um, the current hybrid gets good reviews for maintenance. So they think that it could possibly be that this is an older, three-year-old hybrid. So that was one thing they looked at and then of course they feel like we're trying to encourage residents to buy hybrids and this is just one of a number of cars in the fleet, so that's, so just express their views on it, since I'm their liaison.
So I, I talked to the chief also and, um, one of the things, I mean, we're all environmentally mindful, we want to do what we can, um, to be green and, you know, look after the carpet footprint, that kind of thing, but reliability is the thing that, it trumps everything, in my opinion. So I'd ask the chief, and maybe we should ask the EAC, are there similar sized townships within a hundred mile radius that have a fleet, the, a current fleet that can give us case histories to say, hey, you know, here's our feedback. I asked the chief that, he said he hasn't heard of anything. He did speak of Cheltenham, that he had bad experiences there too. Uh, so the day may come where they're very reliable, but I, I think I'd want to see a lot more evidence of reliability. Cause the worst thing that can happen is he's responding to a call, one of your guys, and, uh, they get in the car and they can't go. And seconds matter.
Is that a self-check or a standard of your policy?
Is it specifically related to the hybrid portion of it that it's not running or is it other issues?
It was a lot of the emissions related, the emissions related issues related to the hybrid.
Right, right, okay. So just so you guys know this, um, the school, the former, um, bus company that, that operated for the school district had a hybrid bus and they ran into the same issue. The hybrid portion of it rarely worked. They turned it off and because they couldn't get it to ever work properly, they eventually turned it off and just used it, the diesel, because they needed a bus and they needed a bus that could be reliable. because they needed a bus, and they needed a bus that could be reliable. They said two out of five mornings a week, they couldn't get it started. And we don't want that for a police vehicle.
And I'm all for it for non-critical vehicles that where we can, where time isn't such, so important, such a priority. I mean, if one of the, if you had a hybrid or whoever in the township, and we had an issue, it's a shame. But if somebody's life is depending on it, I don't want to see the police have an issue with response time.
Just report.
So as much as I like the idea of going green wherever we can, this one I think is an exception until we have strong case histories of the most current models in the area and other townships that don't have issues. And I haven't seen that yet. So the EAC may be able to look deeper into that. But I hate to straddle the chief or one of your guys with something that they're not comfortable with and that they're not confident with. That could result in the problem that they can't respond quick enough. That's just my opinion.
And the vehicles needed immediately, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of the economy model and the logistics. You have to take the current one out of the fleet. That goes to our outfitter. It's decommissioned. And then we get the new vehicle, and then we have to get that down next to the outfitter and get that outfitted. And there's, they have so many vehicles that do it all the time. There's a considerable lag in time in between getting outfitted. It's usually about two to three months before. Once we get the vehicle before it's actually in service.
It looks like we've had eight different reasons for the one we have being down over the last two years.
Right.
So I hate to, I respect what the EAC is pushing for, and I push for it hard myself in my personal life. But I think in this case, I'd have to steer away from it. That would be my opinion. Yeah.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Sure. I just, I was at the EAC meeting, and where they discussed all this, and having done a lot of research into electric vehicles and hybrids, I, hybrids are just ridiculous to even consider. Because you end up having to maintain the gas part, and as opposed to just an electric vehicle where there's very little maintenance, very little brake, no oil, all that stuff. So if you're going to consider anything, you really want to rather consider all electric, or in terms of combustion. And just said about the hybrid all the time.
Do they even have patrol vehicles that are police vehicles, electric?
They have one fifty. The problem is, I've seen them for admin vehicles.
Yes.
Right. That's why I'm asking. Have you seen a patrol vehicle, electric?
Also work a day, works twelve hours, and then other all the company labor to take that car.
I think we should mention that. Like, looking to your next purchase now.
Right.
Because we might be wearing now to get it into a tour. And we need a vehicle at least the size of the tour, because we carry all the time in it. So a normal car would look.
So, so understanding the difficulties and unreliability of hybrids, that's fine. Just looking forward to the future, because we've discussed, we've discussed the move towards, we want to move towards an electric fleet here over time. And I think it would be prudent to start looking now for your next vehicle, because you're always replacing vehicles. Start looking for that next vehicle now, because the lead time on those electric vehicles is like a year or two now at this point. So you're going to be talking, talking your next vehicle up, and we don't want to come back and just always have the problem of the need is now, and we want to have, and so you're going to need like a gas vehicle now, because that's what's available. Make sure you're leading out like a year or two for your, for your next purchase.
I think for township in general, we'll have to look into feasibility and quality of putting in chargers.
Right. And I think that's going to be part, yeah. And that's part of our discussion right now. We're working on a clean energy, some clean energy improvements, and that, the, I think the township is looking into a charger. It's just the feasibility of a charger for the township municipal complex. So we are, we're going through a municipal complex assessment this year, I think. Or is it this year or next year?
Feasibility study this year.
Feasibility study this year.
We should start the process this year.
Correct.
And so, so as part of that, I would coordinate with Lori on that and make sure that we're, we're working in on that.
That's the other issue that I've seen, like, for example, that's the other bit.
Right.
Trying to find that.
That's, that's why I'm saying, get, start looking, start looking now so if we, if we need.
Like, can you order one?
Yeah, maybe. They didn't close the waitlist. So just.
You have twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, and understand. And, and so, yeah, start, start looking now, because this board will, at least this, this member of the board will be pushing towards electric just as a, as a point of, point of preference for, for where we, we have committed to Ready for One Hundred, which is all-electric fleet, all-electric utilities, things like that. So, so just keep it in mind, because, well, we, we want to see the most reliable cars on the, on the, or most reliable, reliable fleet. That, that may include electric vehicles sooner than later. So if that involves putting in an order at some point in the near future to, so that we have the lead time for it, that's, that's why I'm thinking longer term. Because for this vehicle, I understand that there's hybrids, hybrids have more components that are, that are just, they can fail at, fail more frequently, because you have more components, more mechanical components to deal with.
The other thing we have to do, there have to be some sort of, and I don't think that, okay, we generally, we currently have to building the complex to do it.
Yeah.
When power's out for a couple days, we keep stuff doing the lead. I don't know how.
Right.
You can charge it or two for it.
Yeah, the generator.
The power could be there.
Yeah.
Also generator, like, two generators.
Yeah, but that, that size, there's minimum circuits inside the building. It doesn't have the access.
Right. So we, we should, so. But anyway.
This might be something good to put on a workshop topic.
Yeah, I think this will be a longer, longer discussion, but for the sake of today.
Right. Well, one thing I can add is at the last EAC meeting, we also discussed the replacement of the manager's vehicle. And I am working with the EAC to research an electric option for that, and how we could potentially charge it here. But a lot of discussion was held around that is a little bit more, it's a lot more practical right now for the administrative vehicle.
There's not as much, there's not as much lead time for that.
For that consideration versus the police vehicle. Right.
We don't have to, I mean, we may have, again, this is off-topic, but if he's going to buy an electric vehicle in the future, we may have to buy two electric vehicles.
Correct.
Because if we don't have the time, we're going to be doubling our fleet because of the time you need to, you're turning it over at each shift. We don't have the time to charge it.
Well.
They do have.
Can I, it's, it's, we should probably just.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I really think that we need at a future workshop meeting to come up with a vehicle purchasing policy.
Yep.
Because what you just said, someone may disagree with. What you've just said, someone may disagree with. I don't think this is the time or the place to do that. But I really think a workshop meeting would be really appropriate for us to come up with some kind of a vehicle purchasing policy, so that we can make these decisions, so that, you know, we don't go to chief and say, oh, you need to, you can't replace your vehicle right now. It's going to have to be, you know, in three years. I mean, he's like, no, I need to do it now. And this is, we just need to come up with some sort of a policy that just makes sense.
We'll put that on the agenda for the next workshop. And I drove a Tesla for the first time today. And if they are available in the future and reliable, and we can find a way with the feasibility study to tie it all in, this might be a good time to do some exploring on that.
Teslas?
We'd be looking at it.
Not, not a Tesla.
Four, four light.
Well, not a Tesla.
Yeah, not a Tesla, but a, an electric vehicle. I should say, I drove my first electric vehicle today.
Yeah, just EVs. Yeah.
And it was pretty darn full of power. All right, let's move on.
Oh, yeah, so.
So, yeah, so we have a, I'll make a motion that we buy the non-hybrid for this purchase. And do we have a second?
I'll second that. Oh, go ahead.
Second.
All right. We've had a discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's move on. Review of 2023 PSAT's proposed bylaws changes.
Oh, you're.
Oh, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, the monthly after-report, so I don't think I've ever broken that, but I don't know if anybody's checked out the Facebook, this Facebook page, but a couple of developments had people going through three and four in the morning. One driving a car, one going out of car, checking all the cars for unlocked doors, taking items out of cars. So we can get that spread around even more than just Facebook every week.
Definitely.
Yep.
Lock your doors.
Yeah, load your, I won't say.
Lock your doors.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, review of 2023 PSAT's proposed bylaws changes, nominations, report, and resolutions. This is in preparation for the 2023 PSAT's Annual Conference, where it gets township manager is the 2023 Voting Delegate for PSAT's Discussion and Review of Items to Be Voted On at the Conference. Lori, want to say anything about that?
Um, sure. So normally, the way we handle this, you all have copies of the 2023 Proposed PSAT's Resolutions. These are really, this is just what PSAT uses to shape their legislative agenda. Voting on these doesn't put any policy into place. It's just giving PSAT the direction, on which, which direction that the members want them to advocate. So does anybody have, usually, we just kind of go through it, and if anybody has any objection to the positions of support or oppose that PSAT has put out, so essentially, if you want to send me to vote in any way that's not listed on this sheet, that's what we should focus on.
I confess, because I've been away, I have not read any of this.
I'll start. The only one that I really had a comment on was 23-33. We've seen that public utilities are being taken over by municipal authorities in higher, higher numbers. And I think that it would be prudent to advocate for them to have to maintain the same standards as municipal water authorities, or gas authorities, or whatever, whatever you got out there. So I would, the PSAT set oppose, I would say support.
So I was wondering, what number was it?
Twenty-three, thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Oh, thirty-three. I'm sorry.
It's on page seven.
It says, I'll just read it. It says that PSATs seek legislation to require for-profit, privately-operated water and sewer utility companies to comply with the same mandates as municipally-owned systems not operating for profit regarding capital plans, environmental compliance, and similar such mandates. So PSAT is saying that they will oppose that. And Mark is saying that he would support that. So he would.
I think that's like reporting requirements and things like that, or?
For example, you know, privately-owned wastewater utilities are not publicly, are not POTWs under the Clean Water Act, I believe. And so nothing that PSAT does is going to make a privately-owned wastewater utility meet that obligation under federal law. So I, I'm just not sure what authority PSAT has to.
If that's, yeah, if it's a Clean Water Act thing, never mind.
I, I mean, it just, environmental laws is very broad, right? And it's going to.
And it says here that the committee felt that this resolution was not addressing a township issue.
I just think it's, it's probably more of a federal law issue.
Okay.
Personally.
Other than that, Mark, any other?
I, I.
I don't think there was anything else.
Mine's not, mine's not loading. I'm sorry. Seems like the PDF is slow.
Yeah, I was having trouble with that earlier, too.
What, mine?
Do you have a printed copy? No, no, no. I mean, I have, no, it's loading now. I just wanted to quickly read through.
Lori, in any of your managers' meetings, has anybody brought up any of this stuff and said, oh my God, can you believe they're doing this?
No, but something must be going on in Bucks County related to wastewater treatment plans.
Yeah.
Because all of the resolutions surrounding wastewater treatment regulations is coming out of Bucks County.
Not, not comments.
It looks like, it looks like they've mostly just steered away from even considering some of the more controversial issues that pop up. So, I mean, really, there's not much, there's not much really there.
If we look at those, I mean, PSAT is supporting these resolutions, but 23-31 and 23-32, in general, when I read these, I don't love any of the resolutions that use the strong language of only, or prohibit, or when they're, you know, supporting something that would tie the municipality's hands. 23-32 says that PSAT seek legislation to amend Act 12 of 2016 to permit for-profit private utilities to purchase only distressed municipal and authority-owned water and sewer systems. PSAT is supporting that.
Where, where is this? Which one is that?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, thirty-two.
Page seven, top of the page.
I mean, that's just one that I flagged for the board's consideration of, not that it really impacts us today, but it, and again, that is just something that they would be advocating for. PSAT has no authority to do anything other than, I mean, they're establishing their legislative agenda, but.
I'll have to abstain from that discussion.
Yeah, I don't know how they can, how that would hold up, but.
So we could, we could, you could authorize me to vote nay on that, essentially. So I would be voting against PSAT's support of that, if that's how the board felt. The same thing with 23-31. That is seeking legislation to amend Act 12 of 2016 to prohibit for-profit private utilities from acquiring municipal and authority-owned water and sewer systems based on fair market value instead of book value, unless, but, fair market value must be used when purchasing water or sewer systems from distressed municipalities. Again, none of this, right, exactly.
Let me just say that I've seen how this sometimes is, there are other states that do have requirements that public utilities can only be purchased by private entities if they are environmentally challenged to the extent that the municipality cannot manage it.
Right.
That will require is then a resolution ordinance from the governing body stating that we are unable to manage the environmental compliance of this system. I've seen it's very, it's a very challenging position for an elected official to be in to make that public pronouncement, that they are not capable of running their system.
Exactly. Right.
That's all I'm going to say on that. But I've seen that in others, in other jurisdictions. That is standard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just points to consider. I have no feelings either way, whether we support this or oppose it. I will leave it to my colleagues.
And if nobody has any strong feelings about it one way or another, we can simply vote the way that PSAT is voting.
With what you've been hearing, is this one of the sticking points where people are saying that one's kind of silly, or shouldn't be in there?
I haven't really been hearing much of anything on it. To me, just when I read it, that's why I say something's, that's, these are obviously very, there's a whole line of them that are coming out of Bucks County. There's obviously something happening there that's not happening here.
I think it's a public knowledge that there was a sale of the wastewater utility that did not go through.
Right. That did not go well, and now.
In Bucks County by a public utility.
Right.
Yep.
So now we are doing this.
I mean. I'm surprised they didn't say that was outside of a township jurisdiction.
I'm fine if Lori votes the way everything is written in this.
I don't need to talk.
Okay?
You okay with that?
Don't care. I'm fine with it.
Okay. There you go.
Great.
All right. Moving on. Okay, two-minute reports, board liaisons.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had one other that I flagged on here that actually is a emergency services matter that I thought. Twenty-three dash twenty. Sorry, I was on the wrong page.
Yep.
And in fact, this is perfect, because we have some potential input in the back of the room. So 23-20 says that PSAT seek regulation, seek legislation to require that emergency service providers that offer membership to their organization give amnesty to members from any fees or charges for services provided that are not covered by the member's insurance. And further, that such providers honor amnesty given by other emergency services providers to their members. That's the face that I made when I read it.
Can you summarize that and give me a?
So this is saying, and Evan, maybe you can speak to this a little bit. This reminded me of the conversation that we had in our last steering committee meeting. So if they, you know, they seek reimbursement from a patient's insurer, and the insurer does not cover 100% of it, if that person has paid a membership to the ambulance company, the ambulance company cannot bill the member for the difference.
Yep.
And perhaps they don't, or will choose not to, but this is saying that they would not have the option to.
Can you come up to the microphone? Yeah, we're putting you on the spot here. Sorry.
Bill, how much does this hold water if ever?
This means.
I haven't looked at it. I wonder whether it's a social club or the fire company.
So who would be considered a member?
So currently, with the fund drive, we offer ambulance subscriptions, where your donation would offset any expense that you incur, should you be invested in your life. So you're at high difficulty to pay for money.
That's just for ambulance.
And how much is the membership then?
I'll go and call. I'll, I'll have to take a look.
Ninety-five, seventy-five dollars for.
In comparison to how much is a typical cost of service for an ambulance?
Did you scrape your finger? Did you sprain your head?
No, but I mean.
In all seriousness, there's a significant difference.
My friends, the gun, my house, not for my cooking, two thousand dollars.
Yeah. It's a lot. So I mean, this, this, making that mean?
Yeah.
Correct. It says that it would require that emergency service providers give amnesty.
So they can get hurt, though. I mean, if it's three thousand dollars, and if someone's paid seventy-five, they're screwed.
Correct. And, and you may, you may choose not to bill them.
Still bill, not care for the appropriate adjustments. It's a best practice. I don't know that that would make this hurt.
Right. And that, that was exactly my thought. And again, this, this is not making it mandatory. This is just, we would be voting to support PSAT's putting this on their legislative agenda, that they are going to advocate for this legislation.
Yep.
It may never happen.
I like the idea of it being something you offer by choice, rather than trying to someday mandate you to do that.
So we would oppose this, then?
The state needs to make that mandatory, and that don't.
Right. So, the word, the word require is what I did not care for in that.
I think so.
I would object to that. I think we leave it as you guys have it, rather than trying to tell you what to do.
We have enough funding issues with emergency services that.
Yeah.
What if it said outside of volunteer fire companies, and then said the rest of the statement? Is that?
Well, and that's certainly just proof of the AMAT's threat.
It just says emergency service providers.
So that.
That could be for everything.
And that, and that such providers must honor amnesty given by other emergency services providers to their members, which is just a mind.
That's pretty complex.
Right.
So if an ambulance went to my neighbor's house, and then I needed an ambulance, and you didn't, and you didn't have one, and somebody else came in, they're saying, okay.
But again, that's voluntary.
But it's voluntary.
Yeah, I would oppose that one. I think, everybody agree with that, to oppose that one item?
Yes.
Oppose that one.
Okay. Lori, thank you for reading these.
I got one. You're welcome. Some of them were really interesting.
Thank you. All right. Back to the two-minute reports, board liaisons. Mark, I need to report.
Just polling, still going to planning commission, still talking about it.
Okay. Choosing anything?
The EAC is having a litter cleanup on Pothouse Road on April 22nd, beginning at 8:00 a.m. They're meeting on. They're meeting on West Evergreen Drive.
I just wanted to ask about the litter cleanup. Lori, I, I think I saw your email earlier, is it on our township calendar?
Yes.
When you go to the calendar, that's on the first page of the, it's on that?
Yes, it is.
Township events?
Township events, yes.
But does that mean it could, shows up on the cal, I guess, was my
Yeah, the click on the township event.
Oh, it's a different, you don't have all of our things on one calendar? They're on different
They're, they're on one, but it, just for ease of, it kind of self-sorts so that it's not cluttered. You have to, you just toggle over on it. And you have to be in the, yeah, it shows up as a color on the, if there's an event on the, on the date.
Okay. I'm sorry, just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, well, that's it. Do you have anything, Danielle?
We had, let me just, if you don't mind skipping me, I'll come back, I just wanted to pull up the regional planning committee agenda.
Gosh, this is so long ago. The historical commission met, and they are still talking about the historic districts and how they want to approach that. I again mentioned to them that this board felt that it was important that they come to them first before they get knee-deep into anything, and they're still working on that. And so I will keep you informed.
Danielle, you want?
So we had a regional planning committee meeting on the twenty-ninth, March twenty-ninth. One of the big topics, which I don't know if is particularly relevant to us, was the discussion of a timber harvest ordinance. So we're learning more information about that, I think some of our member municipalities might have more
We have, we have one in East Pike Land. It's, it's pretty simple, it's like a couple of lines, it's, it basically limits timber harvesting on like agricultural lots. Or, or requires permits to be pulled so that you can prove that you're actually doing commercial timber harvesting or things like that.
So we sent a letter with recommendations for the, as part of the consistency review for the Hearsill Road Elementary School, Jim Schremer has seen. We did have a presentation or a brief discussion from Uklund Township, which came to discuss the development, the potential development in Downingtown from Amazon. Amazon is planning on putting
Wow.
a very, very large facility that would be, well, I should not say, I should not say it's
Is it a data center? Or is it a warehouse?
I should not say it's Amazon, I don't know if it's been identified as Amazon, but it is a distribution center. And Downingtown would be, the Downingtown School District would be selling a large piece of property that they own. And also part of the prior
Which they took the eminent domain.
Did they?
Prior, the, the, the Vanguard had owned a large farm there that they were gonna use as campus. Anyway, it's, if, if they can get the slips off of the term pipe, this would be several years in the making proposal. Uklund Township was informing us, it's really before the school district, I think it is Euclid, sorry. Euclid Township was informing us, there's not really much we can do as a body, they're not part of our regional planning committee, but I think they're just trying to spread the word to local municipalities.
Regional, yeah, regional impact is gonna be pretty big on any distribution center of any magnitude like that.
Yeah, and it's gonna, I mean, I think they're, they're right on the border of this, and they don't have any correct vote in, in the project, so.
Yeah.
Does this have to land up next to Chucky Supply on one thirteen? Back along Lionel Station or?
Uh, it may be, because that's the
No, I don't think so, I think it's on the other side of one hundred.
Is it?
I think so.
What is that, that whole area right there?
It's on the other side of one hundred, I think. Isn't it, Tom?
There's two projects, I recall, one way
Here it is.
At one hundred and three Boulevard.
Yeah.
That's the farm right next to the term pipe, that was owned by Mayorkas, sold, and as of when I regard, that was an approved project for a large warehouse, three warehouses, one of them, over a main street.
Okay, so then maybe that is the property, okay.
Now, this is a separate project from the Lankle Station, which is on the other side of the term pipe.
Right.
Which is laying down by Downingtown, near the school.
That's probably the one we're talking about. They're, they're looking at a two million square foot, uh, two million square foot of farmland with a fourteen, fourteen hundred and thirty-two space parking lot and three hundred loading docks, so that sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but, yeah. All right, so that's, that's a big one.
And I, again, I don't, did not mean to suggest it was Amazon, it is called the Lionfield Trade Center, and I don't know who the tenants.
Oh, okay. Well, the sale agreement's for ninety-six and a quarter million, so.
Wow.
That's a, that's pretty, uh
They made a huge profit on it, and they acquired that the eminent domain, and they made a huge profit.
Well, keep an eye on that, thanks.
I'll report a meeting with the chief tomorrow, if things are going well with police, thank you for your service, as well as fire. Meeting with the guys next week, we really appreciate everything you guys are doing. And with that, do you guys wanna give an update on where things are with fire?
Tom's over, he doesn't use the microphone.
You were already standing, so, I mean.
Thirty calls for the month, fire calls for the month, two hundred and twenty-three EMS calls, that's nine municipalities served, with an average of eleven members per call responded, two hundred and seventy-eight man-hours in training for the month. I'd also like to remind everyone in these nicer spring days that we do have a burning ordinance that we've been exercising recently, literally amongst the township, and remind everyone that burning yard waste is one hundred percent prohibited as are leaves. If you'd like to have a recreational fire or a cooking fire, you are certainly well within the range to do so. But it would save a lot of time for all of us to stop burning logs or other large chunks of tree and
That's a good one, so.
Are you sitting by having fun with recreational?
Yeah. Or if you have a flag there and you're doing stuff.
I haven't done it yet, but I do tell myself I want to do these things.
That's it, any questions? All right, township manager.
Just one quick thing, we were notified by the county that there's going to be a bridge closure temporary on Valley Court Road over French Creek. This is down off Township Line Road by the Redners, so that, the bridge to the left.
I was actually gonna ask about that.
Yeah, so they say it's going to be temporarily closed to traffic starting April twenty-fourth. So they'll be doing general maintenance repairs, and they expect it to take about eight weeks.
So this is, if you're driving westbound on twenty-three, it's on the left-hand side?
It's that little island in the lane where you can get off, cross the bridge, and you get back on twenty-three?
Yeah.
Or going to Redners?
Okay, so that's gonna be closed.
Yeah.
And the county owns that bridge.
The county owns that bridge.
Yay!
Yeah.
We don't own that bridge.
Nope.
There'll also be a closure off of Merlin Road later in the summer for like eight weeks.
So from April twenty-fourth?
Oh, okay.
It's another bridge closure, they're gonna put in a two-lane bridge or something on the state road there.
Oh, okay.
It's another long closure.
After this one's done, hopefully?
April twenty-fourth.
Probably all at the same time?
All the same time.
Great. And starting April twenty-fourth, they, they say about eight weeks, but, you know.
Anything else to report?
And you said Merlin?
Merlin, I think it starts in June.
All right, chief of police, Bill, do you have a, any update you wanna give us, other than what we've already discussed?
And he gave his two-minute a little early.
He's looking at you like, no.
Come back up, we'll give you some more time.
He's inching his way out the door.
Township engineer, Paul, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do, I'm sorry, I do wanna add, there is a, the, the clean energy transition plan meeting tomorrow. I'm unable to attend, we do have another representative, but if there is a detentive supervisor who would like to participate, I can provide you the information, you can contact me after.
I don't think they would want to meet there.
Okay, if anyone but Martha would like to be there, we could, I will provide you information after the meeting. Just wanted to say that before I forgot.
Thanks, Danielle. Paul?
Ah, yes, thank you. The updates, I belabored Paul Lehman enough tonight, but the, we are actively working on the MS four permit that's going to be due September thirtieth. We've been coordinating with Tina about some property inspections as well as outfall. So those inspections are required to be completed by June thirtieth. So like I said, we're, anything that we can go out to a public area, we can go and inspect, but anything with private property, we're coordinating with Tina so that the homeowner's aware that we're gonna go and inspect a, a BMP or a Seabitch bed, et cetera, that's on their property.
So as part of your MS four report, don't you have to report on any litter pickups?
Yes.
And what do you need?
Uh, I guess we just need documentation, well, with the MS four, you probably wanna know the tonnage that was, that was picked up, so if you can give any kind of report that's formally, that's been picked up or was transported to a dump, that, we can include that.
Okay, well, we're gonna be putting it in Nick's dumpster. So how would we? You could probably do some sort of estimation of the volume out of the dumpster, right?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we can try to figure out something.
I mean, we, we generally report those every, I can talk to Monica about it, I think a lot of times we include those, too, as a special event that we get credit for, it may not get us, we probably don't have to get that technical on it.
Okay, you know, can I ask something that's totally off this topic, but should we be having our litter people sign waivers? Because I remember one time someone was injured, do we, should we have, Bill, people who participate sign waivers?
Participate in, don't litter pickup.
Volunteer, volunteer cleanup.
I will say the township does carry insurance that covers volunteers.
I, I don't see that done, you know, generally, for road races, it's different, everybody has to sign, but, you know, for litter pickup, do we put them on highways, I've never done it, so.
We just had someone who was injured one time, and wouldn't
He refused to go to the hospital.
But if he, if he did, he's covered.
Yeah, I think we'll go there.
I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay. Paul, anything else?
No, that's it tonight.
All right. Discussion of agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings.
So I already mentioned before the April workshop, we were intending to go over the two thousand and twenty-three road paving projects and some extra stormwater projects that Nick is seeking to do. So that's a topic I have for April. You mentioned vehicle purchasing policy. I don't think for April, I would be fully prepared to develop a full policy. However, what we could discuss is the preliminary research that the EAC has been doing for me that we discussed at the last meeting on the feasibility of purchasing an electric vehicle and a charging station as a test pilot on the administrative vehicle. So we could talk about that, I don't know if I'll have firm answers by then, but we can go, certainly go over what information's been collected so far.
Yeah, I think we could do that, 'cause I think, I also think, too, that we could, I think we I think each one of us has a different idea of what a vehicle purchasing policy should look like. And I think we should put those all out on the table so that we can say, you know what, I really like Mark's idea about doing this, and I like Bob's idea about doing this, and I like Martha's idea about doing this. And then we could kinda put everything all together. But I think right now, we don't even have
Yeah.
We're all over the place, and we don't have an idea of what we should do or
That might be a good item for May. That might be a better item for May, just so we have time to compile, compile our thoughts, so we have something cohesive for discussion.
Yeah, and I think it should be done before we do our budget.
Yep.
Lori, for April, I know at a last, and I don't know if it was the last meeting or the one before, we discussed this feasibility study
Yep.
and how you were gonna be preparing the R, I think the RFP for it. And I was wondering, could we, I, sometimes when, when I'm doing RFPs, obviously for different topics, and I'm working with my engineers during my day job, like, it'd be helpful for us to understand what's going into the RFP.
Sure.
So could we add that as an agenda? Just to understand, like, how are you scoping what you're asking for in terms of design work and have a discussion on it?
Sure, yeah, we can do that now. I, I will say that I, I spoke to some other managers recently about their renovation projects and municipal projects, and they've not all been doing RFPs, so we could go the more informal route of just asking, I mean, so instead of issuing the formal RFP document, we just seek proposals informally from
Okay. But is it, whatever, whatever the format is that it, that it gets sent out, whether it's informal or an RFP, I think it would be helpful to have a discussion of what, how does that get baked, and what gets into, put into that?
Sure.
Just to, maybe even just as more of an education for, for me.
Sure, okay, so we'll do road projects and feasibility in April? And May, we will talk about vehicle purchasing policies?
Do you have enough time, think, to gather some of your thoughts?
Sure, which one?
Yes.
Yeah.
For, for general.
For May, yeah. Yeah.
All right, I hate even to raise this, but time is marching on us, and we should do something about our, uh, every four years, our yard sign question.
Yes.
So we've gathered some stuff, and so we're not ready for a discussion yet, but we have to do something by, by two thousand and twenty-four.
Are you our signed ordinance?
Yes.
Our signage.
Our temporary, our temporary sign ordinance, okay.
Yeah, we can, maybe May, May or June, whichever one's
Wanna put that on for May, does that give you?
And we, that's too soon, yeah.
We gotta gather and, and
Yeah, whatever, whatever we end up with.
Yeah, June.
All right.
Yeah.
Put that in for June. Any other ideas for topics?
I have, I have heard from residents, some of which are not happy with some of the, maybe the application and some of the details around our tree cutting ordinance. I don't have all my ducks in a row to sort of memorialize, you know, what those are, but at some future workshop, maybe a discussion on current tree ordinance.
Tree removal ordinance, I mean.
Tree removal ordinance.
Yeah, um, look at it.
Okay. Any other discussion on agenda items for workshop? All right, I think we got enough to keep us going for a bit.
That should, yeah.
Okay, announcements.
We do not have any.
I don't see any.
Great.
Wow. All right.
Come on up.
Public comment.
You have an announcement.
Oh, we got an announcement.
Just has an announcement.
Stretch your legs there.
I need more soup, Tom.
Lieutenant, don't you guys have an announcement for the Police Association in June?
Coffee with the cops or kids?
Oh, cones with the cops.
Cones with the cops?
Yeah. Coffee with the kids?
Cones with the cop is in
I, June has not given that to you yet, but I have it off the, I'll have it.
Oh, okay.
Let's put it on the website, I don't know.
He gave it to me, but
Sounds like Martha wants to announce something.
Uh, if our company decides to be farmed morally, we can set for Saturday or the Sunday or Monday.
Okay.
All right.
And cones with the cop is on June twenty-second, but I just, I don't know what time. That's my problem.
It'll be on the website.
It's in the newsletter that just went out to everybody, too.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
It's in the newsletter?
Yeah.
And there's copies out in the lobby.
June twenty-second on Monday? No, that's May, I'm sorry, I'm on
It's a Thursday, actually.
Okay. Cones with the cop, and I do have it in
Can you grab one of our current newsletters out there? Because evidently it's, oh, I know, Evan, I'm just making you do so much work. You and my husband.
So I have that at eleven o'clock.
Such a drama king.
No, it's in the east.
Time.
David de Cones with the cop?
And that is the same night as the Historical Commission
Yes.
Mid-century modern architecture event.
Perfect timing.
At the Country Club. And that starts at
Probably seven.
Seven, I guess.
It's in here.
It's in there.
Find it.
I had that as a workshop night, is that not right? Twenty-second, I show, oh, that was the original date for the workshop.
Uh, no, that's right, that's the fourth, that's the fourth Thursday.
We could always advertise it a different Thursday, that's fine. The, the June workshop, I mean.
Well, you can get your cone and then come in here.
All right, okay.
Oh, cones with the cops the same day as our workshop meeting?
Yeah, we scheduled everything for the whole township on the same day.
Now, if
We can arrange the cops, bring some ice cream back.
Now, if you want if you want to attend the mid-century modern presentation, then you might want to consider either not having a June workshop or putting it on a different
Or putting it on a different date.
I'm okay with keeping it on a date.
Yeah, I'd say we keep it on a Not like my house, though.
Well, you know what, the Historical Commission, they're doing this thing on the, the mid-century architecture.
Your house is in it.
And my house is in it, your house is in And my house is in it, your house is in it.
Yeah.
Are you listening or is it Martha?
We may, we may need to go to this to figure out whether this is something that we may wanna even have them move forward with.
Yeah, we could make that our workshop.
Ultimately, they will have to present this to the board.
They will have, yes, they will have to present this to us, present this to us, but.
I have, I have made my, I made my thoughts clear at a previous historic commission meeting and I will be happy to make them clear again.
We still have a forum, you wanted to attend the mid-century modern workshop, it sounds like that's what you would like to do.
Yeah.
Should I, I'll say it on the.
Oh, I don't miss that one.
All right, all right, well, we'll work through that. I don't, I don't think anybody wants to change our workshop date unless I'm hearing otherwise.
Well, and so far for the June, that's the June workshop, we tentatively have the sign ordinance, but we don't know for sure that June is.
Well, if it turns to July, it's also fine.
So we may end up canceling it anyway.
Correct.
It's fine.
All right.
Great.
If there's no other announcements, public comment, and if there's no other public comment, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
On favor?
All right.
All right, thank you, folks.
You're good.